Are these working? Why are these working? Okay, so you can face the camera. Come on over. One, two, three. Okay, all right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting for Wednesday, July 21st, 2021. It is seven o'clock and I'd like to introduce the guest. You can turn around and face the camera. From Girl Scout troop 50175. They're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ladies, would you like to introduce yourself, please? Go ahead and do it, Cam.
Hi, I'm Adam Colfer.
Hello, I'm Devin Bollinger.
Hi, I'm Abby Dunlap.
Great, thank you, Abby Dunlap. Okay, so would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And we'll all face the flag and you can begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to tell us about, you can all sit, would you like to tell us about the troop? And you can talk into the mic. You know, I'll go, you can tell me and I'll, I'll come around behind it.
Actually, that, that black thing with the blue lights picks up all the.
All the sound? Okay, too. So, yeah, tell us about troop 50175.
We're working on, we, we're working on the grand awards. This past year, we've been doing a lot in nature hiking and we cleaned out some birdhouses, too.
Nature, hiking and cleaning out birdhouses. Where do you go to school?
Saks Middle School. Saks Middle School.
You're all at Saks Middle School. Great. And how big is your troop? How many people?
Twelve or so.
Twelve or so?
Not just us.
And you have any big hiking plans this summer?
Well, we are working on our bronze award, which is trying to put signs in the Silver Mine Land Trust to educate people about nature.
Oh, that's a great idea. The Silver Mine Land Trust. You're gonna put signs in and educate people? That's great. Do they let you sleep overnight there?
Haven't yet.
No, not yet. Alright, we'll have to work on that. Well, thank you very much, ladies, for coming and introducing the troop. And do you want more people to join your troop? It's kind of, you like it just the way it is? It's kind of nice. Alright, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And you can take your seats if you like. Thank you. So, so this is also, this is a hybrid meeting and you can join the Zoom meeting. The meeting ID, if you can't hear us well through channel 79, we're being broadcast. You can join the Zoom meeting. The meeting ID is 84210046647. And the passcode is 532384. Or it's on the town website. And that's, and be found on the town website on the main page. And you will see by clicking on the calendar, Town Council Meeting Agenda is published there. With that, let's begin with the roll call.
Okay, Penny Young. Steve Carl.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Spent England.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Howard R. Here.
Ms. Donald.
Here.
Rich Nelson.
Here.
Mike Morrell. Is Mike on? Hi.
No, only Mark is on, Mike.
Okay, Robin.
Here.
Mark, who is he on special times?
I'll note it in minutes that he's here.
And Maria Don.
I'm here.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
So, do we have a forum?
We have a forum.
So, the meeting is called Order 709. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Only member of the public, I see, is Grace Stelfield, and then New Canaan Advertiser, Kevin Wayne. So, I guess with that, you know, for, oh, we have to do the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the June 16th, 2021 regular meetings. Do I have a motion?
So, Tom, you want to go on the record with any of your comments that were left out?
You know, just. Do we have, did we have somewhat of a debate?
Well, we can call those cowards, but.
I really didn't call you a coward. Yes, you really did. No, no, sorry. Did I use the word? What I was saying is, no, I didn't. No, what I was saying is, is that it made sense when the town council takes the position and adopts unanimously. They would defend it publicly. I don't think that's necessary.
Are you satisfied with the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes are what's on the table. Would you like to make a motion to approve or change? Okay, so I have Christina has made a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a second? I'll say, okay, Penny. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, there being none, all in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. Now, first selectmen, would you like to give us an update on what's going on in town?
Where should I do this, Tucker?
The table.
At the podium?
You could, well, we don't have the Zoom set up there, so you could sit at the end if you wanted, or if you don't.
Yeah, I'll sit there.
Let's see the back of your head.
I'll be, I'll be the witness. And I'm not a member of the public. I'm going to expish you a member. This one. This, this is designed to pick up sound anywhere in the room. So, if you're this close, it's supposed to work. But I will speak up. So, first of all, on COVID. On Monday, we were raced with the governor's presence in New Canaan at Grace Farms, came to really thank Grace Farms for their enormous contribution last spring with COVID as far as sourcing PPE from China and distributing it to many towns, first responders and hospitals, facilities in Riverdale County. And I think a total of four million dollars. So, the governor came to recognize that. He came to sign a bill, which you'd already signed, but it was a signing ceremony for some new legislation that simplifies government procurement in Connecticut, simplifies doing business with Connecticut as far as paperwork. So, but he, he was, it was nice to have him in Canaan. And we created comments about how well we did both in Connecticut and Canaan with COVID. You know, as I said before, our vaccine or vaccination rates for eligible people are off the charts. I think we're highest in, in Connecticut. Connecticut is highest in the nation, so we're in good shape. We still are giving vaccinations to health department any, every day, what, anybody who wants them. And so, we are.
Right here, you have to be a resident, you have to be certain.
Actually, we have, we have plenty of vaccines, so we will give a shot to anybody who wants to come in get a vaccination. And we have all three. That we're told that the pharmacies won't open a while if they don't have enough people. But we have Pfizer, we have Moderna, and we have J and J. So, we're getting four, five or six cases a week, primarily from people who are unvaccinated. But there's a handful of people who have been vaccinated and have traveled to Chicago, Kentucky places. And they either, or a member of their family traveled, then they come back and infect their family. So, we've got a few of those cases. No one's getting terribly sick, but they're getting sick. No one's been hospitalized, to our knowledge. But there is concern, as the governor said on Monday, with the Delta variant, which now CDC is saying is the primary. Eighty percent of cases in the country are the Delta variant, but the vaccinations apparently work against that variant. So, that if people get vaccinated, we can control it. And.
I'm at.
They won't tell.
It's not flu season. Is your health department worried that once we do get flu season, based on the current trajectory, that we should be concerned that we may, meant that, I mean.
Well, the big, the big.
Risk assessment from the health department?
The, the big debate right now is, you know, whether masks should be required at schools. Superintendent is carefully studying. We encourage the governor to leave it up to local jurisdictions rather than having statewide Band-Aids. Because obviously, you know, New Canaan is a safe place to live and work. And if our teachers come here, they're in a safe environment. So, I hope the governor will give the advice to let local jurisdiction decide.
It's gent, it's gent trapping whether or not, like the people that went away in the back of the accident.
Oh, yeah.
They can charge it.
Yeah, yes, that's, so we've seen that. And, and we're, you know, now that we're back to manageable numbers, they are talking to everybody and tracing and see what, you know, what's, what's happening. The state will now tell us who has the Delta variant, even though they have that information that, or what they tell the person who was tested. So. So, that's COVID. The, on the, on the solar and CHP front, what they, EverSource notifies today that they, we can activate the West School solar system, which is installed. And so, that now makes all three elementary schools and Saks is in the works for, for solar. And as the new roof is being put on the high school, it'll be solar ready for the fall. And, and we're working on the solar plant for the high school. CHP is operating, as we said before, at the highway department and wastewater treatment plant is being installed in Saks at the end of the summer, as the boilers are being replaced. And then we are working on a plan later this fall to install CHP in this building and also at Lapham Center. And the gas has to be brought into Wavy Park for Lapham Center. But, and we are hopeful we can combine Lapham Center with the water tower field lights, be able to use the electricity on both light, the lights in the. And we're going to power the, donning field lights with solar from the high school. So, anyway, that's all moving forward on that front.
My residents asked where, where, where does the gas project stand with relation to expanding it into houses? You know, within a quarter mile of the downtown. I mean, where are they on their phase one, phase two, phase three plan at what point, you know, will?
Good question, John. They, they lost ground last year with COVID because they couldn't go into people's homes. So, they are still working on the original eight hundred or so targets in the first three phases where the pipe is. They will not extend even 500 yards to a new street if you're not on the 150 feet where you're entitled.
Everybody who's in the current plan has already been contacted or are we?
Oh, yeah. No, EverSource contacts. In fact, Tiger, Tiger's contact, Tiger is in the position to try to accelerate repaving because they have to pay us to repave the roads. If, if people, you know, the way it works again is you have three years after the pipe is in the ground to hook up. And then there's a moratorium if you don't do it to that period. So, we are encouraging people, as a number of streets have done, you can opt out. And we will look forward with repaving the road if everyone has either installed or opted out. And so, but, but they are working on the expansion plans, which we've talked about as far as downtown to Elm Street, Pine Street and and Grove Street. And that should be possibly coming later this fall. Two years. So, obviously, I'd like to get the roads paved. And as I would remind people, Main Street is not a, EverSource gas problem. It's an aquarium problem. And we complained to aquarium and they come over and did some patching. But they, they are, when they're completed with that project, they will repave Main Street.
I will have.
Yes. Yeah.
Selection year, Kevin. In case you weren't aware, it'd be nice to get the roads paved.
Yes, yes. On the playhouse, we are working on a. Yeah.
They're outlawing several states' natural gas or so. So, I don't know how many of them, the issue is. Chefs at the restaurants are.
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind Connecticut. Governor Malloy started a 10-year energy plan, and this is part of that. And because I think the Connecticut homes were only heated by gas, like to 30%, whereas Massachusetts and New Jersey up to 60%. And so, this was part of the plan. In fact, we wanted to get the gas downtown for the restaurants, so they can get the propane tanks out of downtown, which are more dangerous in terms of whether there's a gas leak than having natural gas. So, in Massachusetts, they're beginning to do that, talk about, you know, let's go greener by having, but you still have to generate electricity. And most, half of all electricity generation is coming from gas, and that's not going to change very soon. So, and we have plenty of gas.
Yeah, I don't know. But if it's coming, we could fix it here. But if we put it like a stove, the restaurant's on that.
Yeah. But again, we, we're much better off with natural gas and in our lifetimes and our, I think our children's lifetime, we're going to be using gas. So. And the other library will be an all-electric building and they'll be generating electricity with gas from someplace else to give the electricity to the library. So. Anyway. Playhouse, we, we're working on a plan. We have to have a plan. We are planning more ambitious renovations to the playhouse, partly because they were required and we have to do them. But also because kind of be in there, who doesn't do it all at once. But we need to have that plan approved by the Board of Finance, and they want to see a operating plan as well as a, as well as capital improvement project. So, we're working on that plan to probably come in September, which is pushing off the opening of the playhouse until later in the year or early 2022. But it's also giving the theater industry an opportunity to really improve that, you know, people are going to the movies. And so, we'll come back hopefully in September with a plan with an operator. Police Farm Building Committee met a couple of weeks ago and heard a plan from an architect on renovating as new the current building in the neighborhood of $16 million, including underground pistol shooting range and covered parking for the they call, for the police cars.
Or?
Carport with solar on top. But, but we're also still considering the possibility of a new building. Instead, if we could be confident, we can market South Avenue property to a developer, probably for senior housing. But that, that's, we're gonna have to make that decision by September.
The committee isn't making a decision. The committee is going to recommend.
I, I plan to work with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and Town Council to decide, should we be looking at another, a new build? There's a lot of arguments for a new building because renovating in place is very annoying to the leasemen.
Will the committee make their recommendations public or is that a private recommendation to the boards? I mean, will they finally make their?
Well, the, the, the building committee is only focusing on renovation of South Avenue right now. Okay, if that's what we decide. That meeting was broadcast. The plan is, is public. It's a viable plan. It's good, good to know that it can be done, but it has some advantages in terms of.
So, it's fair to say that's the preferred plan at this time, but it's not the only.
Well, it's, it's one plan. There, there are arguments for building a brand-new building because a brand-new building gives you, at least, exactly what they need the next 70 years. Whereas you're renovating a 100-year-old building to serve for probably another 50 years, but it's not, not ideal in every respect. But that's what, when you renovate a school in Connecticut, they call it renovate as new. So, you basically are taking the guts out and creating a new building within the old shell.
That's the only one they're focused on.
That's what the committee's focused on. The town is still focused on possibly choosing to build a new building. We'll, we'll bring that to you and we'll talk about how we're going to make that decision. We've been looking at 12 different locations and only one or two are viable.
Is there an option of demolishing the existing building and building a new building on that site?
We're going to have that estimate.
That's a sign of the, at least from a facade standpoint.
That's, that's probably the most expensive option.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Why?
Because you have to operate the police department elsewhere for 18 months. And so, operating elsewhere is a $3 million proposition versus operating in place in existing building. And then you're building a brand, a brand-new building in New Canaan will cost us $22 million, $25 million, depending upon. But so, the, the offset would be if we do a town property in another location, we'd be able to market South Avenue for $6 to $9 million as a development property. So, anyway, that will be coming forward by September. Cell towers, Soundview Lane has started construction this week. It should be finished by the end of September, October. An operational October, hopefully. And the Ponys Ridge cell tower is moving forward with engineering work to be able to go to the City Council by the end of August. So, that's, and then I, I think I've said before, all of a sudden, the two of the, the three major carriers are just Gaga about serving New Canaan. Thank you. And they wish they've never been before. So, they're looking at other locations, and this is great news. And we'll talk about the fact that the ARPA funds can be used for, for sell as well. You know, we, we offered to participate capital-wise with the Ponys Ridge Tower, but the Home and Towers prefer we not. But we know, we, we're, we're looking to get these additional cell towers on, on the, on the table. And we're going to be bringing that forward in the next month or two.
So, is Home and Towers doing this privately with the homeowner?
They're talking to some private, it's not homeowner so much as institutional property owner.
This is not a website.
And possibly also with the, possibly also with town property. So. Again, it's much better to come forward with a carrier as well as home and towers. You know, home and towers, we brought forth Ponys Ridge without a carrier and AT&amp;T surprises and immediately signed on. Normally, they say, we don't, it's not in the budget for this year. We got to wait tonight. But all of a sudden, because they're not focusing on New York City, they're focusing on the suburbs, which is fab, you know, fabulous, first. ARPA funds will, you have that on your agenda. We'll talk about that. Was it a forum here last Monday night with the TDA committee, the Community Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce to try to begin to assess community needs, as we'll discuss in your session. The Town Council may want to do your own assessment. The Board of Finance was discussing this last week. And they're going to focus on governmental needs. And we have to, by December, begin to talk about where we ought to be allocating ARPA funds.
And when is the timetable for actually making the decision?
Linda will make, make that part of his presentation. And then finally, what, the library, I told them.
We're, if the Board of Finance is discussing, you're looking at government needs, why is that not a done body?
Well, they committed, they, they created a committee. You know, they, they look at needs as part of their annual review of the budget. And there's an argument that some of the funds we're getting back to reimburse us for lost revenue should just go into general fund and be used for purposes that, but again, I think the process that is being used by different towns and cities. One, we want to see what other towns and cities are doing because we're still learning as to what the process should be. But there's no specific guideline, but it ought to be a process that, and they're also, to a large extent, it's indicated that this is a legislative decision. So, at the end of the day, the selectmen will make recommendations, where the finance will make recommendations, then you guys will decide. Or have your own.
We have separate bodies.
Well, we, we work full-time and you work part-time, so. No, but they, but again, I, there's an argument for, there's actually more of an argument for the selectmen to make recommendations to you. And not, because again, this is grand money. It's not tax dollars. And under the charter, I think the Board of Finance is, is responsible with tax dollars. They don't specifically have responsibility for grand dollars.
What is that thing is that Town Council is probably the decider.
Right.
They're making recommendations, the other commission making recommendations. But if you want, we can make a, we can form a committee to liaise with the Board of Finance and with the selectmen so that we're not surprised on decision day. And that we, you know, I mean, maybe that's a good idea. But our committee, you're right, shouldn't be, shouldn't be redundant. And if we have a committee, maybe we just attend their needs.
That's my concern is to have redundant efforts.
Okay, what, what do you recommend?
Well, I think, yeah, we'll liaison.
Liaison?
Yeah.
Two and three?
You may want to have your own public hearing in September.
Well, we will. I mean, we have a public hearing based on what's going to be represented unless we have a public hearing.
Okay, so when we get to ARPA funds, after we hear the presentation, then we can decide if we want to have liaisons with HPP. All right.
And then finally, last week, when I reported that the library decision had just been made. But as you know, the library is indicating for the Planning and Zoning Commission has indicated that meaningful preservation is required. And that will mean meaningful contribution to the town in addition to the $10 million, we believe.
Let me just make sure I heard. I am going to laugh. So, what we've heard is that the library project, number one, the library project is approved, six to three, and we'll go forward. What you just said was going to, meaningful preservation will be part of that. Which if you, if you look online and you see that, that has been interpreted many different ways, by many different groups. But meaningful preservation is what they gave us. And you've heard that there is an expectation from the library that the town will contribute toward that mandate of meaningful preservation.
Correct.
Is that what I heard?
That's what you heard.
And the more meaningful, the more money? Yeah, you had an indication yet.
No, no, we, we're going to have a conversation with the library because I think the, you decided you wanted Planning and Zoning to decide. And Planning and Zoning has decided that, but now the question is, what does meaningful preservation mean?
Correct.
They have 120 days. I think we need to accelerate that a little. So, we, we all work, you know.
And so, the best way to get at that is you're going to have a meeting with the, the library board members and administration and, and ask them what their plan is and what kind of monies they might be looking toward from us. And then you'll come back to the boards and let us know what, what that plan is.
Right. And I, you know, as I've talked to you, John, Todd Lobby area and you, and we'll be talking together to see to understanding what they think they, they plan to do.
Yeah, they, they charge their own. Very usable, this situation they developed to a certain extent. So, they're working on it already? Yes, excellent.
Looking at it, Trump said, for certain, the visible place, the facade.
You two are not going to go into that.
Anyway, that was my update. Any questions?
Want to give a lead now?
I don't plan to leave, but I, I want to participate in your ARPA discussion, so.
I got a question on the library. So, with this decision, did it slow down the library's starting shovel and ground paint?
Maybe, but they, they had hoped to be in the ground in June. Now, now it's going to be September. But they, anyway. Any questions?
And I, I work a reading every morning and the tremendous, tremendous things going on, pandemics, et cetera. And I'm curious how it's going in terms of coming up with the actual reason that have.
Tucker is working on that.
I've been interviewing. A lot of, now, different, whether they're event planners or caterers. And speaking with some folks even in New York, and how they do that, what, what people do in terms of outsourcing that role. So, I'm preparing with me with one more group. I've asked a committee to come in next week. I will put together a little summary and share it with all of you.
Yes, I'm sorry, sir. We, can, can they hear you when you talk?
Sure, it's being picked up. Yep.
But I'd love to hear you summarize what you could say.
Just the report will be coming. We've been interviewing a lot of different, I talked about Cranberry Park, and on the solar situation over in Walwa. As well as event planners and caterers. I will put together a small report and share it.
The Advisory Committee on Buildings Infrastructure has just focused on that as well, so.
So, my question, if you're talking to just catering companies and those event kind of planners, we're dealing with a 25,000 square foot building. And I would hope that we're looking at how that building itself can be utilized usefully.
That's why reaching out to Aaron over at Cranberry Park gave me a lot of ideas of how they're doing things over there. So, that's part of the work.
We're calling tavern on the green, finding out what that business plan looks like. I mean, let's get really, you know, let's get some really ambitious, you know, plans. Do I say something funny? Tavern on the Green, that's what we want, yeah, right? That's owned. Do I say something funny? Cavern on the green, that's what we want to have, right? That's owned by the city of New York. If they sign a long-term lease and then operator runs it, then it's backdoors. I mean, it's. All the central park.
The only reason I laugh is all I can see is goes.
All right.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. No further questions, right? Okay, we'll move on to carriage barn approval of a special appropriation increasing the 2021 Waveney Park carriage barn art gallery project. From 123,000 dollars to 173,000 dollars. The source of funding is a $50,000 donation from the New Canaan Society for the Arts. Who is here to present that? That you?
You've already presented it, but yes. So it's a special appropriation. It was approved by the board of finance at their meeting last week. It does require publication. We published it twice. Including this week and therefore it's, it's an approved project, 123. We've got an additional 50,000. So we do need to increase the budget and need appropriation to spend and to book the revenues as well.
It's a wonderful idea. Thank you, New Canaan Society for the Arts.
I have a question. Is this the handicap accessibility and offering certain bits within the building or is this for some other project?
I don't, I don't. I don't think there's, is, you know, there was an apartment there and they're, they're upgrading that space to be used. For programs and also as bathrooms. So, and any bathroom we do these assessments, any type of accessible, but the building itself, building itself doesn't have handicap accessibility issues because it's ground level.
Right, but that's, is the benefits of the, the other projects that.
Yeah, they were off there last year.
And I believe they're also in New York, which they are.
On their expense.
Functional in the summer time.
So that's all to the drawback of that.
Do we take the electricity in that building? They do?
So any other questions about this project? I wish everyone was this easy. Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? So it sounds like we're improving the building. That's the use of the money and the money is coming from the New Canaan Society for the Arts.
Expedition.
Okay, and no further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it looks like.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, you just put it up. Under this new legislation, if unless a vote is, if, if the vote is not unanimous, you have to poll your members.
You have to vote by roll call if it's not, yes.
Okay. Can we hear you, Mike? Say something.
Yes, yes, I'm in, I'm in.
Are you, are you a yay on that vote?
Yay.
All right. Now we're unanimous. All right, passes. Uh, do you want to do the financial update or do you want to do the American recipe plan first?
Um, I could do the financial update first.
Okay, go ahead.
So we're, we're closing out the year and I've shared this information in your, on your tablets. Tracking the major revenue sources and we started doing this last year. When we did the 90 day deferral, just to kind of track where revenues are, as you can see. Our property tax revenues are trending as we would anticipate them to be based on our high collection rate as of the end of June. We were at 101 total collections and our property tax collection rate is about 99.4, 5 this year. And so the major revenues are coming in, they're scheduled. Our conveyance fees are doing really well. We are at 2.6 million. This year compared to a budget of a million dollars, we fixed almost three times that amount. And then also a building permits really picked up towards the end, towards the third quarter of the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. We had a budget of 830,000 this year, which was slightly reduced because of the low building permits. Year to date, we're just under a million dollars in building permits, fiscal year 21, so. All of our revenues are trending extremely well. We did receive about close to half a million dollars in FEMA reimbursements related to COVID expenses last year. So those were received in F F 21. So those are booked. We have about half a million dollars yet to be received related to the Saya storm. And so I talked to Bill Osman today, that's going through the approval process. It's about 503. We do anticipate that to be approved. That'll be booked in fiscal year 22. Most likely, so we have those reimbursements coming in and that is separate from the ARPA funds that we're about to discuss.
Is that, is that the last from the census?
Was it?
The last of the storm or is it the first?
This was, no, this was the first one. We haven't received any storm reimbursements yet.
Is there any platform that's small after five or three?
No. No, and that includes, um, the way that they do the reimbursements, they include things like the use of our vehicles and whatnot. So it's actually more than the actual cash that we spent. We spent about 400 or so in cash. But we're getting 500 because they're including time and depreciation and those types of things as part of the reimbursement form. So we're getting a, a bit more than the physical cash that we spent because of how we calculate the reimbursements. And then just doing, looking at where we will end up this year, we're still closing out the year, but I also included. A summary of the year to date, expenses with some year-end projections for revenues and expenses. You recall that this year. This fiscal year, we did two special appropriate, two major special appropriations. After the budget was approved and those were for the board of ed, we did 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars. For COVID related expenses for the non-lapsing fund. And then we also did another 1.9 million or so for their internal service. And so we, we did special appropriation of almost $3 million this year. With the intent of using our fund balance to make, to make up for those fundings because we knew we had some additional funds that were coming back. And so year to date, we're looking at. Overall budget spending of 154.8. Over a revised budget of 155.7, so coming in slightly under. And as I shared on our revenues, we initially budgeted a revenue of 147.7 and we should be coming in at about 149.8. And so revenues are going to exceed budgeted revenues. And our expenditures are going to be a little bit less than what we had revised. But we will be drawing down the fund balance this year as planned. We'll probably be drawing down anywhere between 4.7 or so million dollars this year. The board of ed will be coming in. Under budget this year, just from information that I've heard, they'll be giving back some funds to the, to the town for the year. They're closing up their books. When I spoke with Joanne, she thinks somewhere in between a 1.2, 1.3 million is what I have in the projection. It could be more. A year to date, they're about 2.5, 2.6 million under. There's, there's still some bills that are being paid. Summer wages for teachers and those types of things that are prepaid, but they are on track to underspend by that amount. Possibly even more, but we should know more by the end of August when I come back to you, closer to closing up.
Why are they underspending their budget?
Uh, there were a number of programs that just didn't happen because of COVID athletics, just not utilizing all of the schools. There were a number of after school programs. That weren't, that weren't used. Substitute teachers weren't in demand as much. And so all of those have led to some of these savings coming there, but just because of the nature of the.
Where are they on their planetarium project? I know that that was something they budgeted for, right? Have already, and I don't recall whether they budgeted it for the whole thing or part of it.
That wasn't included.
That wasn't included.
It's not part of their current budget.
They asked for it again.
They asked for it, they can get it.
It was half a million dollar, but it wasn't approved.
I have to remind everybody again that there's a $15 million final turn that is being built five miles from here.
Be that as it may, I just wonder if you're not getting any sense from Joanne that because they've underspent their budget, they're, that they'd like to spend that money on projects that they're not going to ask for back. They're expecting to return.
They are expected to return it. The only provision they have would be the COVID. Related expenses and the last time we met with them, I believe it was May during budget adoption. They still have some funds that are, remain unspent from the appropriation earlier. And then they can also apply some of the FEMA reimbursements that they received through the cares. Care responding towards that. And so there is also a potential. That the 1.9 special appropriation that they received may not be fully spent. And the portion that's unspent, if they need some additional COVID expenses would come from that, but they would have to come back to the board of finance and the town council. For approval. I believe their plan is to come back in September to reconcile those funds.
Did we ever say that they could just mention and those count directly to the town?
Yes. The town portion comes direct to the town. The board of ed does have grants that. They, they still flow through the town, but they go directly to the board. We don't apply them to our, to our balances. But they do have grant programs that are administered through the board of ed outside of the general fund.
Do they write their own grants?
Yes. We do some of that. There aren't too many grants, general government grants, but we have like for example, police department has grants. We have some human services grants. Health department voted grant this year. There are smaller grants at the department level. But there aren't too, there aren't too many major grants like the board of ed type, because those are programs specific that the town would qualify.
So if you're part in specific, they would write the grants.
They would write the grants and then they would come to you for, for, for approval or sign off before we submit them, but yes, they, they originate from the department.
Let me just say one thing. Because I, I, I think it's a subtle point, but I want to make sure that I make it. When I ask you about the reconciling and whether they're going to ask for this money back, you talk about COVID expense and special appropriation, which may or may not. And I understand that, but putting aside COVID, right, there will be additional expenses. They will be special appropriated and we all know how that's going. But what I heard you say was that the kids, the programs directed at the kids, which didn't get spent. Are not being replaced with something else that, I mean, COVID is one thing, but those kids didn't have a theater program and they lost a lot of, of sports. So I guess I'm a little surprised that, that if, if they've got money that was not spent in their budget and they have projects and I just picked one. That they wouldn't come back and say, we'd like to spend this money on the kids.
I am not.
It may happen. We don't know that yet, or are you pretty sure that they're going to just return it to the general fund?
I've had numerous discussions with the board of that and there's been no indication that they will come to request new program funding. From this outside of the COVID funds that they have.
At least one of us is a little surprised.
In a good way or in a questionable way?
No, I think that, um, you know, if they ask for that money for, and wanted to invest in the programs for the kids. And, and didn't, and we, and we cut it, we and the board of finance cut it from the budget. And now that there is money unspent. I would, I would expect them to come back and maybe ask us again.
John, they can't, they can't transfer operating funds to the capital project.
Got it. So they didn't spend it on operating and they, and it all, and there's no way you make up for that.
But if they have incentive, they have to return.
Got it. Now I understand. Okay. And there was a time, I mean, I, I, I would applaud the man and Brian for keeping the steer attention. There was a time 10 years ago where that money found its way back into general fund and, and, you know, we've asked time again and Joanne and Brian have proven that they are running a very tight ship there. When there's money, it's coming back. Ask about it. There we go. Yeah, so I got my answer. So it's an operating budget versus a capital budget.
Well. Right, but just one other question that we got a surplus to the general fund that. About 40 seconds.
The general.
Right.
General fund surplus.
I'm projecting FY 21, we're going to draw down on the general fund. We're not going to add to the general fund.
Forty five.
That, that, that doesn't answer my question. So what's, how much surplus?
What's the fund balance? Oh, okay. It'll be about 29, close to $30 million.
After the drive.
After the drive.
Okay, and that's before you have the $6 million to talk about.
Correct.
Right, so.
Yes, because that's $6 million that's coming in. We're putting that in a grant fund until a decision is made on how to spend.
Is there anything else that the planning could hit that? What about the 4.25 moment?
That, that's projected in.
What, what is the amount of surplus that we should be running according to?
Right, so GFOA says about 16%. The board of finance guidance, I believe, is about 10% and so this. This balance puts us at about 19, 18%.
Yeah, well, $30 million, if you get 10%, if you get 10%, it's $50 million versus 30.
Correct.
You understand me correctly. They did debate this. This is not.
Last, I, I know they did, but at some point, I mean, you know, we've been worried about what COVID. And at some point, I think.
Well, I think we're heading in that direction. Like I said, this year, we're going to draw down about 5 million. Next year's budget had a drawdown of 5.2. So the plan is to begin to spend down some of these things.
As an aside, Rick, since you brought it up, somebody asked me today, what's going to happen in New Canaan taxes and what's going to happen to our mill rate? Over the next few years? And I said, our mill rate is probably going to go down, but not just here. I mean, as valuations improve all over Fairfield County, mill rates are going to go down all over, all over Fairfield County. But our, our town budget has been flat for the last two years, two years, three, three years. How many, how many years have we kept the town budget flat?
The amount to be raised, the tax, the taxation amount has remained flat for about three years relatively.
So we, and, and the, and the school budget has risen by less around, I'm going to, I'm going to say around 2% a year for the last, that same period.
Their operating budget.
Their operating budget.
Two, two and a half.
Has gone between two and two and a half each year.
Actual spent, yeah.
Equal to the contracts. So my prediction was, and now that you brought up the fund balance, I, I told this person, I thought millage would go down and I actually think that taxes will remain at least flat. I wasn't going to predict that your taxes can go down, but I think that we have the wherewithal and the projections and a real, and a real estate economy that would support flat. Flat taxation.
And I think that I agree, you know, that the only thing that offset that is the $6 million. How much of that extra?
So if you're done with the financial report, we can go right into this. Because he just said, what are we going to do with the $6 million?
So I did want to provide you an update on where we are with, with the ARPA funds. The last time I, I presented this to you. We were anticipating $6 million total allocation for the town. We had heard from the state that they would give that in two installments to get about half before the end of the fiscal year. And half into the next fiscal year. We did receive on June 20, June 25th, the 2.9 million, 50% of that. Into the town. We booked that in a grant account separate from the general fund. As, as we had heard, we, they are the eligible uses of funding. We could use it to support public health expenditures. Address economic impacts to the public health system. We can replace lost revenue. That is the only time it actually looks back. The intention of these funds is to stimulus, to stimulate the economy, but they did have that provision where you could make yourself whole from lost revenue. But they do encourage it to be used for new expenses. You could provide premium pay for essential workers and then you could do investments in water, sewer, broadband type infrastructure. So those are the eligible uses. uh, you could provide premium pay for essential workers, and then you could do investments in water sewer broadband type infrastructure. So those are the eligible uses. I did include for you, uh, there's been a lot of discussion and commentary on it. The Connecticut Conference of Municipalities did put together the America Rescue Kid Plan, uh, which is a 20-page document that kind of highlights the uses and whatnot. I think it's a very useful tool uh for people to understand. And that the Board of Selectment meeting yesterday, this morning, yesterday, uh, it was also suggested that we post this on the website just for the general public to be able to also get some information on on the the ARPA funds and what you could use them for. So we're working on getting that, on getting that posted.
You're, you're going to put the 20-page document outlining what it's to be used for on the town website, so everybody can read it
Correct.
in the next few days.
Yeah, we'll put it, I mean, wherever we think it's more, it's more usable. I think the front page is, I think the suggestion was what we did with with the COVID and the tax deferral, where you could cut, there's a banner, you could see it in multiple, multiple sites, for ease of access. Finance is a bit buried. Um, so so we will, so we will do that. Uh, one thing that we found is that, um, you know, each town is unique, and so each town have, will have to develop their own ways of of dialogue and discussions um about these, uh, you know, the the big cities and the urban centers are addressing issues of disparity. Um, downtowns and businesses have been impacted differently depending on where you are, and therefore all of those are eligible uses of funds, but each community has to make their own decision based on their own environment. And as Kevin mentioned earlier, uh, one of the first discussions that we had here was in this room, uh, that was organized by T-Back just to kind of begin that discussion and to kind of get that, that needs assessment. Um, but this agenda item is really just to kind of start the discussion.
Why don't you join us up here?
Where
I know that you're
Where we go from here. We had the discussion with the Board of Finance, and as Kevin mentioned, uh, they're putting a group together to kind of discuss what are the governmental needs and should be applied towards lost revenues? What are some of the new initiatives based on the guidelines that could use this for? Um, and then at some point, we will have a general discussion and a sense of direction as far as where we go.
Clarify one point of from my understanding was that the, the portion of the six relates to that's the, that's how the dollar amount would turn. We submitted what our losses were.
No, um, it was distributed on a per capita basis, um, not based on anything we submitted. Um, and they determined that our allocation was $6 million. And then it's up to us to determine how we allocate the $6 million. If we want to apply it towards lost revenue, we can. It just so happens that our estimate of lost revenue was about $3 million. We could choose to apply to lost revenue, but we don't have.
Yeah, but I guess, so put another way, what's the most that would bring taken to the general fund as opposed to spending, um, you know, preferred projects?
So we've lost about $3.1 million. That's the most that you could use, if you decided to replenish the most that you could use to go into the
So everything else you would need a specified purpose?
At minimum.
There's some of the things you kind of, you know, my careful plan, but it's one of the specified purposes, so.
We do. We have some.
Can we do a retro one plan bonus for town employees?
Not for town employees, but you can for first responders and public health workers.
I think that would be good.
I think
I'm, I'm sorry. Um, I mentioned this the other day. You approved, um, I believe it was June, the volunteer tax abatement as an example for first responders. And we've, we've started to make those payments. I think we're at about 60 or 70,000. The plan, before we knew any of this funding was coming through, we were going to use our own funding.
Um, although, although we didn't budget for it.
We didn't budget for it. Um, right. Uh, these would be funds that you could use that. So that was an example of a plan that we already have in place. We've already have a process. If we wanted to use these funds as an incentive to first responders and so forth, we could use these funds for something like that, or any new programs um that we have, that we do have that program in place that qualifies already.
We come back to this.
Hey, Linda?
How much of this one that actually goes through uh spending, you're you're studying, you're applying finance for all of our general, general uh expenditure that
Depends on the type of debt, isn't it?
No, it depends on the
It depends on the type of project.
So you're saying if it's a qualified project, then we would, we wouldn't issue, like, like police station. So we wouldn't issue
Right.
more debt.
That's what I'm saying. I was wondering how much we, we had in the plan that we had that kind of characteristics for the police station, you know, how much it's expensive.
So police station would be one that we could, we could look into, uh, possibly, uh, we have the movie theater as an example that's in our capital that would definitely qualify. It's downtown, it's lost revenue, and so that would be a project that would qualify for use of these funds. Uh, we have some um capital projects, sewer-related projects, because sewer is something that that's in here. We have some CHP. Uh, those are some types of, I mean, we still have to look and and further detail, but um on the surface, those would be the types of projects that you could use these funds and offset the need to either borrow or if they were to be funded by tax support, not funded by tax support, because you have these revenues to do.
Right. So I'd like to say thanks to play back to that.
Well, if you were going to spend the money anyway, so movie theater, that's the question.
No, I, I agree, but some of them, and I would, I would say, take a look at emergency responder thing that we're just talking about here. Uh, we've already started to pay the money out, and it's not a budget. That is an increase to the benefit. So if you just wanted to do it, that increases still, it's going to be there, right? So it might, that doesn't solve a problem for us, but we have a piece of the base that
Yeah, good question. Did the nurse that I remember getting
We have, well, we have it for two years. Beyond that, you know, they gave it to us two years.
What were some of the big ideas you heard at the T-Act? I mean, now, I think that I I read the reporting, but I don't know that everybody, but what are some of the ideas that you heard?
Wayby, Wayby Care Center suggested that they they could begin to work like they do with it, kind of well to provide additional um telemedicine, tele telehealth services. And um, because, you know, the the sense of these funds too is it's supposed to be COVID-related recovery from the COVID pandemic, so that, you know, you're doing things that would, that are helpful to that recovery. And uh, so Wayby Care Center made a proposal, and uh YMCA made a proposal for um expanding their infant daycare, um, and also um add CHP to that, and so to their building for energy savings, because they some of the nonprofits got significant amounts of PPP, PPP um as a number of businesses did. So you had employees. The nonprofits that didn't get PPP because they didn't have um uh employees um have indicated that, you know, so the arts are another, you know,
Maybe it was
That there's an argument to be made that they had a hole in their pocket um and weren't eligible to get PPP. So, you know, they should be. So I, I think listening to the nonprofit community as to what their needs are, the arts in particular have been in some town who's responsible in the idea that 2% of the fund should go to the arts? Yeah. So um lots of ideas flooding out there. I, you know, I'm going to, through our West Cog meetings, understand what other towns are doing. And um, I think by September, we can have better color on what we think other towns are doing. And you know, the cities have much different needs than than towns do. And, you know, clearly, we had some impacts from but we also had reimbursements from the rest of the CARES Act funds.
So you're facing that, I think you can't, Dance County presented so many arts, so a lot of the arts.
Yeah.
And it was a nice job. Being caseful, I think.
If you took all those ideas.
I counted up, I counted up $15 million.
So everybody gets a third of what you're asking.
That's always Linda?
Yes.
Linda, can you uh hear me? It's Mark. Um, you, I, I, I think you said 3.1 million in lost revenue. What, what was the largest component of that? Or is it just a one big round number that you have?
No, it was, it was three big numbers. We, we looked at Recreation Department. We shut down the parks. So Recreation is about 560,000. Uh, parking, about 1.9 million. And then we have other funds, including the rental from the movie theater. Um, and we also have some rental revenue that other rental properties around town that add up to about 670,000. So that's 3.1. Um, in the tablets, I did provide that breakdown uh in one of the attachments. I think the first attachment on the ARPA funds, I've itemized what those numbers are with with the time. But that's what makes up the 3.1 million.
Can you talk to us, um, unless some people have other ideas, but can you talk to us about the process going forward? I understand you, you've talked about the, when, when the money is going to hit the account, and I get that. And Kevin alluded a little bit in his presentation about we have to spend the money
Three years.
Within three years, and we have to start making decisions to spend that money when
And the auditors would like us to have a plan possibly by October.
By October to have, to have a plan as to what we're going to do. Um, and depending on what we're going to do, they're testing, because these funds have to be audited. So they do initial testing to make sure that, do our plans meet, meet the test. So for example, if you say we're going to apply 3.1 towards revenue, they're going to verify my numbers. Um, what was your methodology? How did you come up with 3.1? If we say we're going to apply to Project X, they're going to want to see what is Project X, does it meet that criteria? Um, and so I, the initial discussion is by around October, we should have at least identified what we're going to apply this. And these could be future projects. It doesn't have to be because of stimulus. Um, even if we've identified projects that we're going to initiate in summer of next year. Uh, but that allows them to kind of do that initial testing to determine if we're doing the right uh, we're making the right uses of the funds. They are going to be
So you guys know a lot of
External auditors. Yes.
This, this will become part of the 21%. Or, or
It depends on what we do. So for example, if we apply it towards lost revenue, for example, um, these were revenues that were lost in FY21. So they would be part of it by 21, if it's future projects. Um, but they was, they still have to put an opinion in this year's budget, even if it's for future.
This is separate in a part of a project that is sold into the financial statements for all of the funds.
It will be more than likely be a project by project because it falls, it will fall under the single audit, or the federal single audit, which is project specific.
Is that a hard headline?
We don't normally get federal grants.
That's what they want.
So that's right. This is uncharted territory for us, other than educational grants, we, for that deal.
It isn't. And there's actually a discussion, and I think part of the meeting tomorrow morning with West Cog is a discussion is what specifically do they want in October? And that was a, that was a question I posed yesterday as well to our, to our auditor. Do they just want a list of projects? Do they want detailed project schemes and whatnot? That we don't know yet. And so we're hoping to get some guidance on that over the next couple of weeks.
Does your, your, each qualify as part of the plan?
Well, no, it's kind of interesting because the grants actually allow you to pay for consulting to assist you with determining if the projects are eligible. So it's not inconceivable that that would qualify for uses of the funds.
So I I hear two different things going on. I hear there's definitely a, a group out there that, and and there are members of the Board of Finance with you, Rick, uh, who are looking to focus this on things uh on the reimbursement side, uh, to reimburse us for the lost revenue, to return it to the taxpayers. There is a certain elegance to that because all of us were affected and everybody should participate in the, the return. And, and, and it's easy. It's frankly, it's the easiest thing to do, is just return the money to the taxpayers. Um, and I understand that, and it's an elegant argument, and it's easy.
Well, actually, the one thing, one thing you cannot do is reduce your taxes.
Can't reduce the taxes, but but we've heard so many ideas on, you know, offsetting revenue and reimbursing auditors and and it. But I haven't heard from, from my, from the left side, um, hey, you have a once in a lifetime opportunity to go do things that you've never done before, and maybe some of the least organized and, you know, quietest voices, people who are not used to coming before us the year after here and presenting a budget, you know, finally have an opportunity to say, there is a need in the community, and you should address it. And we don't have a process in place for evaluating the merits of both of these points of view. Or making sure that this is a fair process where the loudest voices don't just rise to the top. The Y, the YMCA, you know, has never asked us for money before. You know, I'm kind of surprised. Or, or the, the dance, right? Or, or the dance.
Oh, but they, but they were significantly harmed by, by COVID, but they, they also took PPPs to, so that, you know,
So
You have to evaluate what their, what their losses really are. Keep in mind, we didn't have a net loss either
Right.
in terms of our revenue line, because other, other revenues made up for these lost revenues.
And, and 50 more behind them who didn't show up and ask for money, should they be ignored? Just because they didn't ask, you know? Is it, that's what I mean by the loudest voices, the boldest, most ambitious, are going to get the money.
There's no doubt on what to ask. I mean, if they still have the opportunity to ask, wouldn't it just
Right, right. Well, I think that that's what we have to do, is we have to make sure that we communicate a process that everybody understands, and that if we're going to invite people to ask for money, if that's the way we do things, we invite people to ask, that we make sure that that's out there and asked away. But if we're going to set that expectation, then we ought to be really committed to evaluating
John, one thing I'd suggest, you know, we have, we asked the community foundation, because the community foundation is in touch with every nonprofit in town. They handle their annual requests. They know who, who was hurt by COVID. They know um who took PPP, so
Right.
It says, and there's
They're in the business
They're in the business to know. So I think, so that's why we asked them. Now, the other hand, I was impressed by the fact that the business community didn't show up for the forum last week, because in many respects, how do you, how do you evaluate business, local business harm? And um, uh, the reality is, I mean, for example, that's why the Playhouse is one thing that could benefit all of the main and helm community, um, to get it back in operation, restaurants, and attract people to town. Um, so, you know, we, we got to evaluate those opportunities, say what, what would be impactful for the business community as an economic development matter. Parking is one, is one thing that clearly, you know, we probably have a need, not for commuter parking anymore, but for business parking, because we have some changes going on in town about business parking, so.
I'm confused, John. How people really go through the process? And, and people, I don't understand, I, I don't understand the process.
Yeah. We just started the process last week. We're in the beginning of the process.
We have to write that process.
Yeah.
But we're not being asked to write that, we're being asked to, to approve something that comes into the season.
Oh, no, no, we, no, we invite, we invite you, we're going to come back with, uh, you know, some recommendations, but not necessarily a full plan. I think you need to anticipate in September, you're going to be working on this further.
We can write that process.
Yeah.
Who's responsible for the process? I, I think, I think what you've told us, Kevin, if you're responsible for the process.
No, I, you know, the staff works full-time.
No, I know, but
This is one thing. Tucker, Tucker works on economic development, so we, we're beginning to assess the community needs. And you, you know, you may want to have a public hearing to make sure that people have had an opportunity for, to be heard. We've received letters from various nonprofits, so.
But Rick, what you should know, in terms of the forum the other night, uh, first of all, the Chamber of Commerce reminded the whole business community, three different parts, the meeting was taking place, as well as did the Community Foundation. There was a forum, and if they weren't able to attend, they could throw, actually, they could throw it out, even if they weren't. So we received some feedback. When we asked, we really think about it and put some structures. And so we have all of that in for the swell. And that was just this, Kevin said, another start. We have, we have a lot more time to look into this.
It's what we're doing now, is we're, we're reflecting on the forum that's taken place. We're reflecting on the first handful of asks, which are now starting to sensitize us to the range of possibilities, YMCA, dance, first responders, uh, taxpayers. So for the first time, you know, now we've got an array of choices, and now we have, we have to put that process together. The first element has already identified that they are going to be recommending, and the Community Foundation is prepared to make The first election has already identified that they are going to be recommending and the community foundation is prepared to make recommendations. But we we it is incumbent upon us, the legislative body, to put together that process. If we don't, I suspect that first election tells what that process is gonna be.
Oh, no, I'm inviting you to.
If we don't do it, I'm sure you and London will get together and say, this is the process. But we have an opportunity to to find it ourselves.
But how do we make the criteria for nonprofits? Have you, because there's gonna be winners and losers.
Yeah.
And have you set that up? So for the three point one million, we go back into the general box because of revenue loss. But we can't put the whole amount. That would be seen as helping the taxpayers, correct?
Correct, because we haven't had six point one million dollars in losses.
Right, right. So just the three point one million to the rest.
So if you said ten million and then three million, three million, if you lost that, with that decision, you have a two million dollar.
It makes sense to me that the three million dollars go toward governmental purposes and the Board of Finance is gonna be analyzing governmental governmental needs. And then the other, you know, the others, I think we gotta decide are governmental needs still there or do we want to share it with the nonprofit community or other community needs? I mean, some some cities are giving it to people for for human needs.
I'm not there yet.
Yeah.
I could say that Ridgefield is right with three percent or the Board of Finance is right with fifty percent. I don't know yet.
I don't either. I don't have any conclusions yet. It's it's July twenty, what is it, July? July twenty first, and we got a couple more months to talk about this. And and I'm not even convinced the audit requirement is that, you know, we have to have a firm plan by October. They just want to know that we we that we know where we're going with this.
John, I think the key word in what you said earlier is expectations. If there were a way for us to have, for instance, under riches governmental stance committee, have a group get together and talk about roughly what criteria for the the money, the, you know, businesses, the nonprofits, you know, might be going after. Are there some criteria? So just to give an example, would it's smart to say, well, it really should be capital instead of just to give an example, as opposed to operating when operating whatever you do kind of runs out after a while and they they create its own gap? Are there some rough parameters? I mean, I think the and maybe should there be a close relationship with the COVID consequence as opposed to a sort of a ideal view of the future? So, you know, the movie theater, while I think there's a lot to be said for that concept, you know, is that the kind of area that we wanted? Because that's not really a directly compensating for a COVID consequence. Maybe indirectly, and maybe it's a smart thing to do, but you know, if there were some criteria even if we don't, even if we can't come up with an absolute list, if we can at least say these are the factors that we would look at. And I think that in itself would provide some guidance. I don't want to set false expectations on the part of people that if they just would stay up a little later one night this week and and write a better proposal, then it means they're gonna have a better chance. I think we owe them a little clarity.
I I think that from what London has explained, that the federal government has already identified the qualifications. Where those funds go and.
As Kevin said, that's fifteen million dollars just from one meeting, so.
Yes, no, true. But when Kevin said.
I was joking.
Well, but it makes a point.
The community foundation would be the place to have the money go and then be given out.
I mean, that's one thing we've talked we've talked about.
And you do that.
We we give a block grant to the community foundation to add to their.
But I don't.
They're the experts.
They're the experts in nonprofits. Right, that's right.
I don't think that the community foundation can give it out to private businesses.
They can if they're they can if we hand them a lot of grant, we give them the criteria for how to judge.
But is that allowable by the IRS? I think that I thought that they could only give it to nonprofits.
We wouldn't have to use them as as the owner of the money. We could just give them the discretion to dictate on our behalf.
Right.
Where where the funds go, right? And I could mess up their expertise. For for example, when they're spending their money, they they have certain criteria that they they are held to. But when we say, well, we need you to open that criteria up and include also first responders and dance studios and YMCA's and all the other, and we have to, we need a super criteria for our block grant. And we would like you to use your allocations committee, you know, expertise, right? And read all the proposals. And because they have a great deal of expertise in reading proposals and seeing through seeing through weaker proposal writers versus experienced proposal writers. They're in that business of evaluating the, I like the idea, you like the idea. I've heard some, you know, that that we that we rely.
Use their expertise, use their expertise. Keep in mind too, that they had COVID, they had a few hundred thousand dollars of COVID funds that were given by people to help COVID needs and they couldn't distribute them all.
But why?
Because they couldn't find the needs during the during the, you know, in last year. So on the other hand, you know, how people define their needs is is kind of.
Well, that's the thing. They wouldn't want this function unless it was tightly defined as to what their criteria.
Right.
And so that's our job, right? And the criteria that was there last time obviously drove a smaller distribution than might have been expected. And we gave them criteria and they.
We shared we shared with them the guidelines and as we did with you and you know, but again, by opening up the process, talking about it, getting Grace and others to report on it, we'll we'll hear from people.
You could either purchase one of two ways. You could give them percentages and say, try and work within these percentages. I'll give you an example, or you could say, assess the need and then whatever the need, whatever is not spent with the need, we will reinvest in offsetting debt on on qualified projects like the Playhouse and reimbursement of revenue. So therefore, what this means is you take the six million dollars and say, if you're the community foundation find that there's a legitimate six million dollars of investment out there that we should be making, you know, then recommend that to us. But if you go out there and find after reading all these grants, if there's really only one, two, two million dollars worth of legitimate need in the community, and then we'll take the other four, we'll allocate two toward projects like qualified projects like the like the Playhouse that were already identified as priorities from Kana. And that we were going to do in the ten year plan anyway. And we'll spend and and the other two, to your point, if we if we don't have projects, shovel ready projects, they can go to offset lost revenue. So clearly, you could get to four million, you could probably get to five million dollars, you know, if if all they could find is one million to spend. I suspect they'll find one million to spend if we give them the right criteria and we open it up.
Where would the criteria go tonight? What would crying means here goes, right? But I think there are two things. Over here and shop. There are two gaping holes. So what? I think that anything that comes up that has that, you know, we can analyze, stop with the blind play, like. That's okay, but I think saw childcare was absolutely critical, everything that we did. So that spent time almost every month, you know, discussing, you know, our, you know, how are the elderly, you know, how you how you need eight people, you know, in a housebound situation like that? Who do the ability and outreach, you know, concentrate or chat about that. Where we.
So we also have to remember what 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 money has flowed since then. So there may have been an awful lot of federal money that spilled that space. So I wouldn't be surprised if the is the elder care situation, much of the needs have been built. I could make the argument, though, equally well, that for example, one of the most important assets we had over the last year was our parks. And one that just described that our park, our Parks and Rights Department is harmed to the tune of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of lost revenue. And so you you could make the argument that it it's a key asset. It was overused by the community. And we could be, and if we're supposed to be investing.
Don't confuse, don't confuse parks for recreation because recreation lost revenue, but they also didn't have the expense of part time people who would have provided the services.
Right.
So.
And also, I just use that as a thought experiment, meaning alongside the elderly and alongside kids, you have certain, you know, departments that we could invest in. We haven't stopped budgeting for the future needs of the parks or of the. It's not like they're they're saying, oh, my God, my next program I can't afford because COVID, right? So we'll budget for it.
So just in in terms of thinking about the town in the future and what we need to do to bring businesses. I remember Steve Pleben then years ago talking about making Kana basically the new leader of, I don't remember his exact words, but it was sort of like the how to develop internet products or products that would whether it was microchips or other things. What what can we do to build our infrastructure to support businesses to come in? And really be able to have both the internet and the capabilities?
On that point, that's a good point, Christina, because the I had a conversation with Pullman Towers last week. There's a community that is looking to expand broadband through 4G cell service. In the rural areas, 4G cell service is broadband, right? You know, it's alternative to getting a table there. Optimum and and they're looking to apply rescue act funds toward.
4G improvement rollout.
Right. And actually, one of the things we discovered after the storm last summer. A number of our communities like us have poor cell service and some are looking to go into the business of having a and, you know, our case, Kana is wired by Altice. They have not marketed their high band broadband, which is available with fiber to the home. Other towns only have fiber yet. So they're looking to possibly federal government encouraging people and other, you know, people use Rescue Caris Act fund last year to build out cell service and and broadband in other town, other around the country. So that's that's another need that we when we were talking about partnering with Pullman Towers on the building of the Thomas Ridge Tower, we offered to own the pole, which is about a hundred fifty grand. They prefer that we don't screw up their investor models and how they how they finance there. But, you know, we we still need have needs in the cell service area to to support the town.
But wouldn't that be a priority for us? Because we really need to develop and bring back businesses, office space, not just commercial business in order to make the downtown more.
Well, that's what that's what T Dax doing. And I think to some extent, you know, right now, we we understand Brenner Chevy was on fire with 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 new businesses, which is exactly the opposite of where they were a year ago. We haven't quite seen that yet, shouldn't have been, but you know, that's, you know, what are the answers there? We we've been having meetings with the landlords and the first brokers on what we can do to help businesses downtown.
That would be one of our things. Because it's not just the first floor retail, it's also the second floor office space.
Well, it's, you know, it's hard to figure out what to do for retail, other than
Yeah.
lower, other than lowering taxes. And put it honestly, we have a conversation going on now, but whether our our valuations are too high and whether that whether that would contribute to lowering taxes for the business downtown. Well, there's a set, there's a sense that, you know, our evaluations, which are done based upon all rent rates are are too high. We have a value reval coming up in two years and we could affirmatively. You know, right?
I think the infrastructure.
Right.
All these guys are trying not to have a goal line. They don't, they don't want to have the houses that go down the streets, but it costs money to go to the house.
No, no, they're 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 planning, if you if you look at the CEO in his in his investor cockpit, said, we're, you know.
I don't know.
Yeah, but but they're they made the most dysfunctional marketing company.
All these.
Yeah.
You have, you have to threaten them in order to make, because they don't want to put your house.
They don't want the volume. They want to do it there. They want to do it at their pace. If you're a new customer coming into town, they give you fiber because it's in the street. They they're not looking to really aggressively.
No, you're okay. You said exactly right.
Yeah.
It's only good for the cost, right?
That's what the because of the pace. Again, Altice is a strange company.
It's one of the issues to town.
They came in four years ago and said, we're gonna wire the town with fiber. And then we really haven't seen it now, anecdotally.
But I'm just saying, I think it's a problem within the town that we really don't have a satisfactory competitive offering to your residents.
That's not unusual. That is the norm. That that is the norm in communities, right? We they're not, and it's probably they like it that way. Frontier is not.
Money that we can help help our infrastructure.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
We're captive to a monopoly effect.
Right.
Right, that doesn't want to give a service to us and just crank the press.
Right.
But we are right next to New York. I don't know how legal or or how true we have to contract with whoever's on the other side of the border.
No, it's my, our strategy has to be to make Altice be better than to try to build a competitor. Other towns are looking at building municipal services, which I think is is crazy for for us because we have a wired town. We just have a company that will will properly.
You're right, but they have no, but they have no.
Frontier, Frontier's. Frontier, Frontier has forty five percent of the town wired with their Uber system, like AT&amp;T. That's a that's a competitive broadband service, but they have a lousy content product, but they they're they're two really incompetent marketing companies. Oh, again, I mean, we're just, we're working on the on
So what I.
We're working on LT separately and we talk, you know, other towns are worse off than we are. But because they don't, they're not, they don't.
So what I've heard is that we have, we have processes in place. We have experts out there evaluating nonprofit need.
Right.
But we don't have, what I'm hearing is a way to address these kinds of needs, infrastructure needs, business, community needs. And and not just needs, but and and opportunities, forward looking opportunities. We can't look at, am I hearing you right? It's not something we can turn to the community foundation and say, please, evaluate those kinds of needs too. I mean, I don't, it's not in their wheelhouse. It's not something they've done before. And I'm not hearing from any of you that that's the kind of thing to say, you know, evaluate our infrastructure needs while you're at it. Okay, so where where could we, is T Dax capable of of making those kinds of recommendations? No, who is?
I think it would have to be different committees. C Dax would specialize in what their center focus is. Yeah, and and we can focus on the infrastructure and then get other ones with other expertise to make suggestions and then you can put it up priority list and see what merges and what works. But I think we need to work towards the future and not just for what's needed right now.
We're the county council. We're very part time. I mean, this is going to require a lot, a lot of time.
It's gonna require a lot of time.
This is gonna require a lot of time. So when you say the we, we will just work, evaluate that infrastructure. I just want to make sure that who's the we?
We can set up a committee, whoever's willing to put some time into it.
But it really, it really is talking, it really is drawing from the from the residents, what what they think the future needs will be to 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 allow the continued development of of Kana and support of real estate prices.
I just heard a really good idea. What?
It was from, I'm sure it was good.
Why do you say it loud into the microphone? What do we have now? It's a technology commission or committee?
We have a technology advisory committee.
Technology advisory committee.
We've been working with them on 5G and and other, you know, the broadband issue.
Would they be able to evaluate maybe technology and infrastructure needs and come back with recommendations on our maybe high target high value target opportunities? That's what we say in the military.
Again, let's, you know, I would encourage, I would encourage you to use your existing committees or your credit committee.
I just recognize.
If an ass created a committee.
It's not part of what we do ordinarily.
You're not gonna get there by once a month meetings.
Right. We just spent six million dollars, six times, thirty-six.
And we'd be happy to meet with you because we're going to be looking at it and coming back with some recommendations if you don't go up with some of your own ideas.
I'm hearing from Christina, maybe it's a new committee. I'm hearing it could be the finance committee. I'm not sure it matters that much because everybody that wants to participate would be welcome. The question is schedule the time and give it, give it more, give it more time.
Okay, I'll schedule something else.
Why don't we, why don't we ask the finance committee to take responsibility and they can lean on you as a member of that committee to.
Or have a joint, or have a joint committee.
Yeah.
Good committee.
Finance and what infrastructure?
Yeah.
Okay, finance and infrastructure jointly, call some joint meetings and invite us all.
Agreed.
It's possible that on something like this, uh, communications infrastructure, that we might decide this is really, really important. But it doesn't have to be solved with our money, you know? If it's really, really important, you probably want to do it as a town anyway.
Right.
And maybe the art money and, you know, to force that conversation to that tunnel may or may not be the logic.
But whatever opens.
I don't think it's a problem to take a look at what, what the foundation does. They try and come on the first year with pride that it's satisfactory. I don't know if it's successful. It may not be successful. And if I understand what you're saying, they're trying to do, they're trying to do the same thing that tried to go whole. It says it will provide some money to get it going and, and along the path of the whole. There's other things besides communication. I mean, one of the things that I think we don't really know is the habit of transportation. Because I don't know if it's a train's ever going to be viable.
You know, I could add to my update on that point. Senator Will Haskell has an indication from the, um, commissioner, the transportation, that we're going to have our express trains back on Labor Day. So I asked him to get that ready if he can. So he's working.
All of them or just a few?
Well, you know, people are beginning to complain about the crowdedness of the existing trains in terms. So, um, those, those express trains serve a very important purpose. Those are the trains that people get on and then pick up people in Greenwich and pick up the ride and they're full by the time they, you know, they're, they're, they're expressed for a reason. So. By Labor Day. That's, so that's, uh, I believe it.
Haskell, Labor Day.
Yes.
Labor Day, Haskell.
Currently residents are driving to Darien anyway, right?
We're going out with renewals for September one.
Mark's talking. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark, are you on the train?
No, I was just saying, I, I, I imagine, uh, I am not, but I, I do, the Labor Day point is a big one because I do think a lot of uh, larger firms in the city are, are targeting that, assuming everything goes well. And, you know, currently any, anyone commuting to New York, I'm not one of them, uh, is probably driving to one of the main lines stops like Darien or Narodin.
Right.
I hope, um, I hope, I hope that, I hope, uh, Will Haskell is, uh, correct. But I, I also just wanted to add that I, I, I do like, um, the idea of, of having a joint committee and, and, and at least I, I know it's a more complicated, and it's early in the, in the process, but coming together and at least thinking more big picture. I mean, one thing I'm thinking about, and Kevin, you mentioned it, I mean, do we have to reimburse, you know, do we have to, you know, think about the government side and, and reimbursing the lost revenue? I mean, one could argue that that isn't a, isn't a necessity at this point in time, given where we currently stand financially. So I don't know, that, that's just one big picture item that we could decide as a group ultimately, but those are just my thoughts, but I know it's early in the process and I, I did enjoy, uh, the meeting last week and I think we should have more of those. That's, that's my last comment.
I want to go, I want to come back to something Kenny said at the beginning, which is the board of finance is also interested in this. So if we've got a joint, if we've got a committee doing this, maybe the first phone call, Christina, could be, hey, board of finance, when is your committee meeting next? And we could, um, make, make sure that we're, we're part of that. And if they're not meeting in the next two weeks, then we should set a meeting and invite them to it. But, um, they should at least be in the room for our meeting or be in the room for theirs. But yeah, I think Kenny's right. We don't want to work, uh, in parallel. We'd like to collaborate on this.
That's one of the questions. Is anybody working on, I think, what somebody thought, or really passed out some people to get their mind around, which says, we really do want to give a lot of the benefits, but we don't want to give any of the back. And, and because I know the way that the, uh, the community foundation works is they know they've got a million dollars to do it. They ask everybody for whatever it is they will pay, and then their assessment process to figure out how much they really.
Right.
Right? Because we know we got some strength.
Right.
I'm not too sure that shouldn't have the finance committee thinking about what, what, where do you really want this money to go? Do you want to, do you want to end up in private hands in the expense? Do you want to end up in government hands in the expense?
Well, but I think that's your decision, not, not that. I think the board of finance. The board, the board of finances is chartered to do a annual budget, capital and operating. Right? Question here is what's out of the ordinary with COVID? Or what can we do that would be impactful for the, for, for the community going forward? Now, if, if they're nonprofits that have holes in their, in their program because they, they, they didn't get, you know, those are the ones I think that we ought to, perhaps the community foundation, as they start their annual grant process, should ask, do you have uncompensated losses or needs because of COVID? And just asking that question would, would set them up for, as part of their review. They look at their, their financials and they say, well, how much are we going to give you this year? Usually it's a normal program year. This could, year could be different.
And you're saying open that up to for-profits, businesses, anybody who at all.
I'm not, no, I wouldn't go there because I, I think that's, I don't know how you.
Well, I just heard about a dance studio and I heard.
That's a nonprofit. The dance studio, the dance studio is a nonprofit.
Because I also heard that businesses were affected and that they could be, that they are eligible or not.
My, my sense is if we, if we want to try to help the business community, we ought to help the business community overall because you can't start picking. And even there, I mean, the sense is restaurants did pretty well, right? Retail clearly is not doing well, but what, what can you do to help retail?
I think one of the things, I was in New York City, I spent a lot of time sitting, and I was shocked because I'm listening to NPR and there's a commercial about. And I wasn't sure it's about New Canaan at first.
Live the Canaan.
Talking about the glass house and then you came to the village, what a wonderful place.
Well, that's, that's the Live the Canaan program, which, which, uh.
I invited them to CT visit. They got a piece on CT visit.
Yeah.
Wasn't, but it was fabulous. So what I, what I wondered is why don't we invest more money to promote New Canaan in New York City? So that we can bring that traffic in.
Yeah, you should. You should talk, you should, you have a T Dac meeting Thursday night. You should run it. You should talk about whether there's more we could do by way of economic development. Our thirty thousand dollars a year doesn't go very far. Um, and we have to think about what we do. Yeah.
Thirty thousand is the T Dac.
No, it's the first electors budget, which T Dac primarily advises how to spend it.
Can you come into the meeting and speak for your.
It's still midnight. Um, we always welcome anybody. The link is on the agenda, which is. Does T Dac in its own budget?
No. Right.
A lot of good ideas.
Yeah.
If nothing further, we can move to the meeting.
Before you do, I want to mention, um, and I think we circulated the fact that, uh, Linda was appointed to the, uh, National Executive Board of the GFOA.
National Executive Board of the what?
GFOA.
GFOA.
Government Finance Officers Association of America and Canada. Yes. So.
Where are the meetings?
No. Well, they've been virtual, but mostly they're either in, um, in the DC, DC area. And then we have, we have an annual conference where the board meets before, before the conference. Um, but, um, as you know, GFOA is the main government authority, public finance. And so the role of the executive board is to plan for the organization, but then also look at the overall direction of the country and direction of, of public finance. I think the advantage of being on the board is you have this vast network of professionals across the country. I mean, these discussions happening now are happening all over the country. And so being in that room and having discussions, you know, what are you doing in Virginia? What are you doing in Texas? What are you doing anywhere else around the country? And to have that context to bring to this room for discussions for our decision, I think is valuable.
I can't, I would love to listen in when you're there talking to the folks in, I don't know, the guy from Topeka, Kansas. When you're like, yeah, the fun balance, we got an extra twenty-five billion dollars in stocks. We're trying to figure out how to spend this year. And they're like, wow, New Canaan. I heard about you on NPR, didn't I?
There you go.
I guess the commercial worked.
Thank you, Kevin.
Uh, maybe it was worth it. By law, it's an ordinance. Mark S D. It's been, uh, it's been quiet on the bounds of what's, the report plus Mark, you gotta be there.
No, uh, but is this, uh, probably the time to talk about the library, Steve, right?
Yeah, so we'll go into the library next. So the library, uh, obviously we touched on it earlier. Plan Zoning Pass Six Three, the, uh, project, which, uh, obviously Mark and I were on a meeting, uh, the building committee. After the decision and the, um, obviously the library building committee is very, very close to results. I mentioned before, uh, Center Broke is in the process of developing a few different books that the evil reservation request. And I think I touched on it before, the mandate of the town issue saying that, you know, we need to, basically the town telling the library that they need that piece of this to move forward. Uh, they probably will have to show us, talk to them, make it happen. And they'll have to go through the same process, basically, that, you know, the whole, that the, uh, project, uh, we presented. The whole part of that council, part of those instructions and, and so they'll have to go to pre-see, they want to. So it's almost a whole new process, uh, separate from what we've already done. So. So I started, so it's, it's, it's exciting. It's exciting to know that things are moving along. And it's exciting to know that I think there's a, a very, very good, um, understanding that, you know, the library does want meaningful reservation of the next three to four years in some shape, some fashion. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see how Center Broke interprets it, you know, we've seen a little bit of their work, uh, on, on side idea, but I think that's, and, uh, so I want to understand the timing. So if Center Broke spends a month thinking about this, presents it to the library board in August, the whole library program has to think about this, et cetera, uh, debate among themselves before they bring it to us or finance or select one. I mean, uh, we, we asked about the timing. They were hoping to break ground in July and Kevin said, oh, it's only affecting July, maybe a month or so. I find that impossible. So, so the approval moves.
John.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
No, I, I was just going to add, um, and this may be part of the, the, the question that you have. You know, the, the board of finance still has to, they're still making some adjustments to the MOU, um, which, you know, so it, it's, the next step would be for the board of finance to make their adjustments and then ultimately move down that path, uh, of approval. So, um, in terms of timing, you know, I would just add that as, as another layer to it as well.
Right. So the board of finance is meeting, uh, Tucker, correct me if I'm wrong. We've got, let me have the dates of the meeting.
None of the dates have actually been confirmed, but they were hoping to get something, uh, at August ten.
So, so August tenth, board of finance, uh, would meet and presumably, as Todd and Gary said, beginning of three, like school, then MOU, approval. And then technically that meeting would, would be their vote on passing it to us. And then we don't have an August meeting on the agenda at the moment, but we would, if, if we could tonight, put a meeting on the, on the agenda for the Wednesday night after that, which would be the weather. We would then be asked to approve the project, the final project. So then.
So that's Tuesday night?
And we approve it Wednesday night?
Yep.
It's just what we, all we're doing, all we're doing is the final approval of the ten site. So that's all, it's, it's a yes or no, both. Project, it's a whole, can we come to the, or they go to.
Well, so, so Mark's comment about the MOU, so the, the MOU, nothing significant that I'm aware of at this point.
Yeah.
Added that MOU, other than I just want to be able to be aware of it before we pass the meeting.
Board of finance members deadline today was to, to provide any input that they wanted changed for the MOU. So that's what we put out there first.
Kind of changes, maybe.
Yeah, we, we, we discussed that they were just minor changes. I think we all knew that they would be minor, minor adjustments.
But it sounds like you're contemplating, Steve, you're contemplating two processes. One is the financing, you know, of what we understood was the project. And the second one is the preservation piece, which could go on for a while unless, unless as I, as I understood, the planning and zoning, at least the rationale behind Plan A, was that it facilitated the ability of the library to charge ahead with construction, independent of the preservation. That's correct. They're, they're, the idea, when they have the Brooks, uh, the, the date was set of August, the final, final, the building process. So at that point, they'll have the complete sign off. It starts realistically, they can break ground sometime in September. See the fancy go up and, and actually the project off ground. So.
While Center Brook is potentially not, not changing the design.
Yeah, well, not, not potentially, they will changing the design while we dig the foundation of, of the, of the preservation part. So.
Yeah, which means not part of the building.
Well, what does that mean? Wait, wait, what does that mean?
Not part of the new building.
Exactly where you're going with that.
Well, Plan, Plan A, if you watch the video, Plan A went into detail about that, that I all watched the video. So. Idea, we have to wait till to see what Center Brook have that with, but you have to have confidence in Center Brook to come up with a, with a meaningful plan. And that's what they, the best is. The getting this project and showing the graph, I know that we've talked about that all over. So August tenth, for finance, August eleventh.
And we approved the plan and they would, they, they dig a, dig a basement. And Center Brook knows that given what has already been committed, like digging a basement and whatever, those are some things that they can't change, but they're going to go change the things they can to affect meaningful preservation. Got it? And it's, and when you point down the project, right? Got it?
And maintaining the library in operation.
All right. Yeah, so, you know, and the preservation side of it has to be, you know, obviously everyone's still, was. You know, thinking about what that next step is going to look like. And, you know, the library now has the green light to design something that works for the library design for the towers, but they need to have meaningful reservation. So I'm really excited about what Center Brook could, could come back. You know, they've got, they've got a great team, actually. You know, it'll be something that's, that, not everybody's going to be happy, of course, but it'll, it'll be, there's no way they're going to please everyone. But you've seen what Center Brook's business is. Well, of course, the new potential for controversy has been introduced tonight, not, not that I wasn't aware of it, but it's, it's not only do you like what they're proposing, but do you like paying for what they're proposing? Yeah, so we, the town has said to the library that we want meaningful preservation. So the town has told the library that, the library went and said, we want to build this new library with a crane. And the nineteen thirteen building is a part of the plan. The town came back and said, listen, we want the nineteen thirteen building in some fashion. So we say, telling, so I'm fighting, well, yeah, the risk attack.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's up to the town now to step up.
And the library has said, and we expect you to help us pay for it because it was important, right? I mean, that was, and we just don't know how much that is.
And then, and then. And the more, and the more, and the more. And the more, and the more, and the more intricate and more, you know, obviously the more you want to save of the building, the bigger the number. But, uh, we've been saying we're swimming in money, John, so.
Renovation is wonderful.
The fact that we're doing well makes us less conservative. I don't think so. I'm, and fully for the record, that was, so I, I am, I am hopeful that, um, I'm hopeful that we'll see some of these plans coming, you know, and obviously they've got a hundred and twenty eight, so we're working on them right now. So sooner, sooner we get them out, the better. The library's done a good job at, you know, trying to be as, as cooperative as possible. It's, uh.
Yeah, Steve, we could need to pin down a, a, a special meeting if that is necessary, or that is a necessity. It will be based on, so if we all agree on that, then, you know, maybe Tucker can put something on the calendar or anything. That's most important right now.
Right. So the special meeting, we can either do it, Board of Finance is the tent, so we can either.
It's not confirmed yet, but. They were actually hoping originally for the twenty seventh.
We could go one.
Right. So it doesn't matter. It's twenty seventh of July or still okay for us.
They were thinking they were going to need the twenty seventh to discuss.
Discuss the MOU and their final review of the financial plan. Uh, but then in order to do it, fun, uh, for looking the, your publisher is what I mean. So what's your sense, Ken? But you.
So there were some emails that went out like this afternoon about this very thing. I think you might be smart in deciding on a date tonight and always move it.
Thursday.
Or just making attention of, did they have?
The chairman can schedule the meeting, special meeting, doesn't have to be done by, by your board.
It's just nice. I mean, I think everybody's, it's a big decision. What's the recommended date?
It was for the eleventh, that was what.
Any reason not to have the eleventh, break it up and then move it?
If the Board of Finance doesn't do it first.
Wednesday, eleven. Let's pencil in Wednesday, the eleventh, and as it moves, it moves. Thank you. Okay. So that's for library. What about, there was one individual who asked for a blower noise ordinance. Is that something?
Oh, they talked about the conservation.
And my recommendation to him was go talk to the people in the other committees before you, you know, and, and get buy-in from the police to enforce it and, and, uh.
And that was part of.
Battery operated blowers don't work for the courts.
Right. So they're discussing that conservation.
Conservation Commission discussed it, it's going to be my report and, and they're going to be discussing it again.
Okay. So let's move on. Uh, education, Tom and Maria.
Well, Maria's not here and I think we've had such headline news about Board of Education.
Not everybody knows. So why didn't you tell us what did happen last night? Not everybody understands.
Well, there, there was slate of four, uh, of, 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 I call it the red slate, four challengers.
Right.
Uh, all of whom were fairly new to the, to the process. Uh, and then there was another slate that had between that, uh, Jen Richardson and then two others who was basically all four of them supporting the fact that the, the, the Board of Education is doing well and doesn't change. Of course, the challenging slate won all their seats. Uh, one of them was this, was a special seat. For the, for, I think, this period. But anyway, all four of them, uh, succeeded impressively. So I think only one of them was particularly close.
So the big news is the Republican Party, the rest is going to nominate for new people in the fall in November to replace four incumbents.
And, uh, that, uh, yes, re incumbents are one.
Yeah.
Re incumbents and one, okay. Got it. And so that's.
Well, the, the report, well, the, I, I don't want to get involved in too deeply into the.
I'd like to hear the news because we haven't seen you in a month on school starter hunts, which was the big deal. I think that they had news where they were getting very close to eight o'clock. How's that going?
Oh, no, they've announced eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Will be the plan, right?
That's eight. I, I missed that.
That would be the start times for the three elementary schools and, uh, wouldn't be implemented until April of, of two thousand twenty-two. And so there's, there's, there's a big challenge to be sure that a lot of planning is done because of the impact on elementary school parents families in particular, but there's time to do a lot of that planning. So, uh, there'll be, uh, a committee, at least one committee set up to work on that transition and to talk to, uh, parents and daycare providers and anybody who's affected in their business or, or their role in maybe part of that change.
How soon will parents know when the bus schedules are, you know, will, will this be communicated to parents?
Well, uh, I don't know what's, I don't know what's been, frankly, I don't remember what's been by school leadership, uh, on the eight o'clock change. But of course, it's been, it's been widely available in public, but I mean, the fact that you didn't notice it, maybe there should be some greater communication. But, um, bus schedule will be a different thing. Uh, I have no idea when that will be ready, but I think parents possibly consult for that based on their location. I'm, I'm not saying it, we should play games with it, but I mean, if somebody's in a hurry to know, they could pretty much back into that based on how close they are to school and they know that eight o'clock is the start time. The travel time is going to be roughly the same. It doesn't change the volume of people attending schools. But whether they, I, I doubt that they would announce all the new bus schedules, you know, in August, given the fact that no one's going to be using that, that new schedule until April.
No, I'm assuming nothing remains the same. I think that they look at this so hard, but on adding re-ring efficiency out of this, that I, I assume nothing.
They've ordered a couple, they've ordered a couple of new buses. And, and one of the things, obviously with the, with the chip shortage, obviously everybody's read about how short cars, vehicles are, or does that hold true for buses as well? So. I actually saw it a while ago and asked, uh, that he said that, that there is a possibility that they've ordered buses, that it's possible, possible. So, so, um, I think that might have been a turn in time to, like, borrow buses or something. It's, they, they want to, they want to get, obviously.
So we're not buying buses.
No, no, that, 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 uh, that, these buses will need years.
Yeah, I'm not positive about that. Some, some of these are, I think they might be buying some buses.
Yes.
Because the, uh, there were multiple uses, not just, not just responding to start times that, that they were. Yeah, some smaller buses, they would have multiple uses. I, I think the fifteen minutes, uh, from seven forty-five to eight o'clock, frankly, I think that, that they've known for some time that, that just from efficiencies, that they could, they could carve five minutes out of that, uh, but they just hadn't, they didn't want to overpromise them to deliver. But I think that's, that's a piece of the change. Another piece of the change is that, that under this new schedule, the high school would start, uh, five minutes later. Yeah, later than, oh, earlier than they had planned. So eight, eight twenty-five instead of eight thirty. So that's essentially a compromise coming out of the the health objectives from the high school. Then the third element, I think, would be the efficiencies added by the purchase of the buses. I mean, I have that exactly right, but I know it's multiple uses that go to eight o'clock. All right. That it?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, finance and government, Mark and Rich.
Mark, have you got anything?
I don't, Rich, um, other than the fact that now we have a joint meeting.
I think we need to get together and figure out a concept, my dog.
Yeah, sounds, sounds like a plan.
All right. Health and Human Services, Liz and Penny.
Um, a few things. I did ask Kevin before, uh, there was a concern at the beginning of July about people.
Yeah, we have two-year brand. I'm not sure what Jen said, probably the question about.
Uh, otherwise, things are slowly the trends of all. Our number seven is the, uh, water note day and the food delivery is all, uh, the, the giving out of gift cards, backpacks. Food actors for the farmer's bucket to, uh, people. It sounds like they're going to have the same number of food that they had. Again, you have to slowly, it's in fact, I don't know if Jen's like, so, or even the rest of the department school, but it's actually really busy because of all of the inspections, building inspections, setbacks and well inspections, but, uh, otherwise I think it's absolutely.
Infrastructure and utilities.
I think the update, uh, in. Exciting that West School is government online there. So.
Yep, very exciting.
Go, go take a glance at the, though it's very, very attractive.
I think it's a perfect time to ask you for an update on the My Cottage.
Oh, yes. Got anything for us on the My Cottage?
Were negotiations with the. First party that responded to the.
That's it. All right. So nothing?
Who else is negotiating? Just you or the board select?
I will authorize a charter to negotiate.
And what about the prior history of town council, giving the board a select under?
We have a legal opinion that Richard questioned on that subject, so.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Which is.
But it was.
Which is quite clear that the town council doesn't have a role in deciding on sale.
You're required to have a.
But that's not what history shows. Because the town council decided on how to sell the cell phone to the mainstream and gave the board a selective extraction.
Well, there's no new development, so we don't have to take this up today, here, now, but personally says he's working on the process alone and is authorized by the charter and negotiation. Uh, if they make, if he, if he negotiates, you know, a decision, I'm sure he'll bring it.
Well, there has to be a, a hearing, a town hearing.
Right. So they're, they're.
By the statute, any recommended purchase, sale. Any recommended sale has to have a public hearing before the legislative body. So it doesn't say you have to prevent that.
Well, I think, in my opinion, I have a little, I think it's just insanity of one person and not have the town council, the board of finance, um, conversations of selling the support property. First is the My Cottage. Now you also mentioned the police department, possibly. I'm concerned.
Then we should change the charter.
Yeah, maybe we should. Maybe we should open it up and do that.
But right now, the, the charter says that the first election is out. Out making, you know, and those investigations and negotiations, but there will be a public hearing and I'm sure the public and we would be very interested in it. And I'm sure no, no sane first selection would go do this if the public outcry was, don't do it. So. There'll be, there'll be, I said that.
For the record, our first elect is safe.
No, I said the situation is insane.
And for the time being, the building, the, by the, the, we, we needed that for COVID first. Nice to have that.
Yeah.
So plan for those health private to come back to this campus?
Yes, yeah.
Because they won't be having the additional staff that they had.
Right. And, and we have space in, in human services from, from the excess.
Land use recreation, Robin, Maria.
Just update of parks and rec, uh, the pickle courts are painted, fences up, gates will have to go up, but at the park there should be, I think, soon, they'll be open them up. Uh, Irish Dunn's extended seating around the park lodge. Steve Banker's report, the hall passes are up thirty-four percent. Uh, the library, uh, newcomers and your return to East Kuanis for programming, uh, new fence has been installed around that playground. The A work at a W B S play because the tile scheme is, and I guess the fire, there's white speckles all over them. So there's, there's an emergency through the company's Friday morning, it'll be the eighth of August. So I was just saying, sure, report that, uh, the judge filling water fountain, we park as the lake because it's, it's COVID, it's in open parts. There was issued some of the resident product about the water gun in Kuanis. It's there. It's just the pumpers backed up because of COVID. The Conservation Commission, uh, the chair for Shiver brought up, uh, the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds, said, uh, supposed to be for select and about, uh, possibly for improvements to the transportation for recycling and other improvements, possible swap shop. All later plantings have gone in at Bristow, um, Center Cross, the buildings going in, funded by the exchange club in Bristow. I wasn't at the meeting, I just watched film. I, I know more about that. For houses, we can take it down due to the advice based on the, the Audubon Society, disease coming around. Converts. And then the biggest part of the meeting was, uh, resident John Seal, he had contacted town council, but he was at the Constitution Commission regarding restrictions to gas power leak lowers. He discussed, uh, ordinances and other towns' restrictions and the Constitution Commission is going to break that.
Thank you. And gentlemen, we're on the Constitution. Because there, there's a guy who did all this down, that, this people.
For those who don't know, Cam, I just ran the conservation information for many, many years, probably ten or more. And he passed away this month and he was young, right? Fifty?
Yeah, he was in my class at Center School and Saks High School. Yeah, he was a very sweet person.
All right, let's take a moment. All right, thank you. Public safety, and then I want, and then I want to add one. Go ahead, Liz and Mike.
Uh, nothing for the police. Uh, Kevin gave the update on the police building. Uh, as for fire, it's pretty quiet, although I did want to note one statistic for the fire department. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the fire department answered uh, just about twelve hundred calls for service at averages, just a little over three calls a day. Uh, I just think that's a pretty phenomenal, uh, work that our fire department does and, uh, our hats are off to them for, uh, always being vigilant and diligent.
Thank you.
Trucking September.
September. What, what kind of truck? Humper?
Right.
Rest. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Yeah, what it cost, I don't remember how much it costs.
That's all you got to know.
Right.
We'll point somebody else.
Are they trading in the old truck?
Anything else on public safety? All right.
Uh, one, one thing, is the camera project that we haven't done?
Uh, so the MOU, which got brought up earlier, says that in it, the town council, uh, will identify two board members to the library, subject to the library's approval, but we, we pick our board members to the library. And the document says that it's done by the chairman. Well, uh, so we should probably talk about putting in our own rules, how that's going to get done. I, I mean, the document says the chairman and the town council will name two seats. I would imagine that, do you want that to just happen one day where the chairman picks two names and, and, and tells the library, or do you want that to happen in? Or do you want that to happen in subcommittee? I mean, how, so if this is the first time we've actually had a chance to talk about it yet.
Well, it should go in the rules of the town council.
It should go in the rules of the town council.
And not the ord, not as an ordinance?
No, no, it's not an ordinance. It would go in the rules of the town council to address this new change in the MOU.
But it's also important that, you know, the town administrator flags that, you know, when it's supposed to happen because all of those positions that come up, it should be, you know, part of the annual work that different positions that go on by lots. Just to remind the council in the future, like, none of us proud that this has happened, so I don't know.
Whatever we decide right now, I, I, I had anticipated that each time a new town council is seated, that they would reflect on, and so there would be two staggered, right? I mean, we're elected for four years, so each time we would name one of those seats for four years and then two years later, that town council would name somebody for the next four years, and so it would be staggering.
It would make it quite a weird one.
That really would work because some people won't run again. So you should do it every two years, not every four. Four years is a long time to be on the committee.
Yeah, it is. I think you'd be right that you don't have to be the councilor.
No, you can't, you can't be, you can't be a councilor. So that's one of the, the town council will name two people, uh, out, out there in the audience and will name them. And, and so one of them this fall will be for a two-year term and one of them will be for a four-year term. And therefore preserving the right for in two years, somebody to be replaced by the next town council. So we'll name a two and a four, and we need to, you know, anticipate that we have to do that. Do you want me to just name names and tell you who I think and then we vote one day? Or do you want to have a committee, uh, vote names up?
I think we should have a committee, just pick around some names and.
Which of our committees is it best, is it, I think we should pick one of our subcommittees where that lives.
The ordinance committee, because mainly because it would have to, um, write the rules or at least do the proposal, the original writing, the, we would start this.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, it's general.
Under general government, we would write the, uh, goals of the council.
Where's general government? Oh, there, you're financing government. That's finance and government, so government maybe should be the one recommending names to the chairman after talking about it.
Or at least writing the, yeah.
Yeah, oh, certainly writing the rules.
Rule.
Well, and whoever writes it will all are part of, so, yeah, if you want to write the draft, then we all talk about it as well.
I think we, we need to discuss what the responsibilities of that person is like to be. Are they, are they a full board member of the library?
They are.
Do they have same financial obligations of service on the board?
Yes. Yeah.
So, yeah.
I, I've asked the library and they said that, you know, there, there is no hard and fast number of a financial, you know, obligation. So they work with each of their members, uh, you know, on defining what that is. So, but the presumption is that they're a full functioning board member in, in every sense. But they are reporting back to us and they are, you know, uh, keeping the town's interests, you know, at heart.
Well, they just like a hundred participation, uh, hundred percent participation of the board members. Terms of donation, they've not said enough.
Correct, hundred percent participation, meaning they know that if they have a school teacher versus a titan of industry, you know, that they have different where we're going, so.
The, the one thing that I just want to make sure, the whole set, or the specificity of the position, that if they are absent for X amount of things, that they, I just don't want somebody taking up the spot and then just saying, well, I didn't attend all of these sessions.
Right, so that can go in our rules that, you know.
Repeating requirement, I don't know what their, what is the library having, or how, yeah, we should check and see if they're.
But we should specify, they usually qualify as public students, you know, if somebody's. Certainly not.
Also, what is the expectation for the report back? Or? Well, that's, that's, that's going to be, but, but these, these, but I, I will warn anybody that's rolling off the town council that they will have a giant bullseye back.
FYI.
Round up the usual suspects.
It's partly, it's partly why I wanted. It's partly why there's government going on here.
Yeah.
I, I did want to understand whether the timing of this decision as well. I would expect that it's the new town council. Uh, so, yeah, let me just underline this, the new town council will get to make the decision. This chairman, you know, isn't going to be naming names, the new chairman will be naming the names. And so you, you've gone to the next step and said, and therefore, the old town council members will be eligible, uh, to, to sit on that. Um, well, and the nice thing is, some of those old town council members are, have a lot of this.
Yeah.
Okay, as an old town council member, I would like to say that to the two or three people who might be watching this on TV, that do not make a presumption that just because we're, um, you know, that we're going to just fill these seats with old town council members. If anybody out there is genuinely interested in, uh, helping the library, make yourself known to one of us. Uh, because I think, you know, we want to draw from the best possible talent, uh, you know, for those, for our, for our board members to the library.
So appointment of a town council appointed pair of people going on the library's board, should they be going on consistently and then their new members go on? And I don't know what that timing is, and is it their fiscal year?
Sounds like we need their bylaws.
Yeah, so I'll get their bylaws.
Yeah, you can coordinate with them and write it however you see fit and explain it to us. I think you've got the, so you're going to be writing the rules and your committee is going to actually be vetting candidates for the new chairman. Okay, got it. Uh, and we did public safety, so is there anything further? I would like to actually congratulate Penny and Tom, uh, for winning the co, the competence of the Republican caucus and being renominated to the town council. Doesn't mean you'll be on the town council, the Democrats could, could beat you. And some independent from left field, some writing candidate, but I think that what I learned last night was the, uh, the Republican Party, it's a great confidence if you win, renominated to the council.
And you saw my spoke there.
Yeah, I spoke there. And, uh, do you want to say anything about the process or what you learned or? Either of you?
I thought it was, uh, a, a great process to have new individuals, uh, you know, interested in service on the town council. I think some of the, uh, as, as new members, as any new member of our organization, they're going to need some orientation to what the exact responsibilities are as an out council person.
Spoken like a real veteran of the town council. Okay, got it. No, that was great, that was great. I think we all know your meaning.
I'll just say they have big shoes to fill.
Well, I, I'll say to you what I said to Grace, when she said, can you interpret? What, what did you, what did you see last night? Uh, I saw that by returning to town, two of the town council members, um, that it told me that the electorate has competence in, uh, the town council and that it current direction. Uh, and that's why they returned. So I think that says a lot about all of us and, uh, and you two in particular.
Yeah, I thought that was very clear, that, you know, that there is competence in what we do here at the council. That's nice to know.
But we didn't return everybody, you know, some of us are going to rotate off and make, make room for new blood. Uh, Rich and I and, and Liz and you and Spence. So at least four new faces, um, in the fall, which is exciting. You know, one-third of the town council will, will turn over.
You know, it might be time also to, uh, when I mentioned the, the word orientation, uh, that we kind of, we've kind of an outline of what the responsibilities are of the various committees and support of the town council. Because I, uh, it's, for, for people who watch the town council meetings, it's not clear in the, the scope of responsibilities.
Are you volunteering right now? Isn't that how it works?
I think I did, this is not, I think, I was looking at the, those who were popping off.
Those are the ones that will have a lot of time on their hands.
Right, right.
That's got to be written before the new ones come on, because they have to orient us. Oh my gosh, it's gone.
So, anything further? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was the audio on that? Did I hear us?